To meet a certain qualification. And they can be three, four, or five-year-olds just by before going into kindergarten. So we did receive two of those classrooms this year for the grant. We did receive a Spanish classroom and then our bilingual classroom. And I'm gonna let Juliana and Rosa come over and kinda talk about those classrooms a little bit.
Okay, so I teach the Spanish classroom for the four-year-olds. I don't know where you want me, sorry. So the four-year-old classroom is mine, which will eventually go on to Buffalo Jones for the Spanish Tracking Program with Mrs. Terrazas. And Ms. Rosie, my bilingual classroom will eventually go to Ms. Faius. So in my classroom, they begin, it's like the foundation, setting the foundation, so they can go to Ms. Faius, so they can eventually get to Buffalo Jones to their bilingual program, the Spanish Track. So we're very excited to be part of this, yes.
Yes, thank you for allowing this to happen. I know it's been in the works for many years and it was finally possible this year, so we're excited about it. I know Mrs. Terrazas and Mrs. Solis are very excited about it as well. She's also a great resource that we've gone to and used, and she's more than willing to help us with anything. So we're all very excited about this, as well as parents and students.
Is there, was there a limit as to the number of students that you can take into your class?
Well, they go based off of the boundaries of Buffalo Jones is what they go off of. Because eventually they will transition into the kindergarten Spanish Tracking in the Buffalo Jones district, or area for the district. But I do have, and I know just we recently had enrollment for our kiddos, and so parents were even asking, like, is this gonna be available for other schools, not just Buffalo Jones? Is this something that, you know, isn't the works later on? And I couldn't answer that question, 'cause I'm not, I'm not sure on that. And this is just the beginning of it, so that's a parent question that we came across, so.
Is it fair to say that that's sort of a pilot project of the district? It seems to fit very well in that setting. But as far as expanding, like she's referring to, there's not a plan right now to expand.
And usually in our classrooms, we try to limit to seventeen students with the two adults, so. She was, yeah, almost full with this, with the Spanish classroom, so. And the KPP, the KPP classrooms with having enrollment this last Thursday and Friday, the secretaries did tell me those two classrooms are already filled for next year. So I was worried when we found out last July that we were getting those, 'cause I'm like, how are we gonna advertise and let people know? And they filled right up, so.
Well, I apologize if this is putting somebody on the spot, but I just wanna ask, what, what is the greatest strength and the greatest weakness of that program? With that particular program? I'm thinking one already, but I just wanna ask.
With the Spanish?
Yes.
Well, I think one of my biggest struggles is going back and forth from them, because last year I had three-year-olds that were at Garfield, and they were taught everything in English. So then I had to pretty much reteach everything in Spanish, because in kindergarten and first and second, at Buffalo Jones, it'll all be in Spanish. So I think that was just the difficulty of it. But now, we are starting the foundation, like Ms. Rosie said, from three years of age, then coming to me at four, and then continuing on to kindergarten. So I think that was a struggle. But my kids made leaps and bounds this year, so I was worried about it. I was stressing out, and then, of course, you know, those minds open up, and they gain all this knowledge, and we're like, wow, this is awesome, so.
That's a strength, the way it's set up now and to work.
Yes.
And even the parents, they were worried about that too. Like, they're gonna get confused, and then they're not gonna learn English or Spanish. But then, now they see the benefit of it, like being bilingual, and be able to learn it, and how to write it, and read it, and speak fully, fully bilingual.
Yes.
Well, I appreciate that, 'cause I know we can't do everything as a district, but we want to. And, and it's good to see things working, to hear from you. And then we hear reports, and I know Laura, who is on and off here, but, but it also has been able to get information from other districts that take this approach, and the strengths of, of it. So thank you for your involvement, and thank you for your support.
No, I was just curious more about the program. The, they're, on that specific, on the Spanish Track, are their top Spanish exclusively through second grade?
I believe so, yes. And then Mrs. Solis is here, so she can, I mean, help out with that as too, but yes.
And is the goal for them to be bilingual, or they're just Spanish-speaking?
Bilingual. Bilingual, be able to read and write.
I'm just curious.
Their primary language is Spanish, though.
Okay.
And your, your question was whether it's English?
Right, their primary language is English, so when is, or Spanish, when is the English introduced?
Actually, the goal is to make sure that our students are cognitively ready to, to work in an English track. We use the Spanish as the foundation, so that's, you know, solidly. At second grade, we transition in English. And then the kids move to third grade, and then they're taking assessment tests, and are showing growth. So we use the native language to build, to build the community.
And you've been doing a little bit of that, or you've been doing that year building for a while, yes?
Twenty-five years.
Okay, yeah. I've studied a couple of those, so I remember. That's why I was more curious about it.
And so it's been nice, because we've been able to do lots of great things with the program, that we knew if we had it at earlier ages, then we're going to just, we believe that it, we're gonna see some great things that.
So in order to qualify for the program, your first language has to be Spanish. A non-Spanish student couldn't put their student in there to become bilingual at any age. That's, no, no, okay.
Okay, thank you very much. Did you have something?
One more question. You mentioned that was a grant, correct?
The Kansas Preschool Pilot Grant.
Does that, does that grant pay for the teachers, or pay for the program?
It pays for teachers, salaries, benefits. There was even money put in, such as staff development, to help pay for that.
And how long is a grant for you?
They have that set. But like this year, I had to, every year I have to reapply. This year I applied again for the classrooms. I applied for a full-time social worker. We have a counselor in our building, one day a week right now. And there's way more students that need to be seen than she can see. So I did ask for a full-time social worker. I also asked for money to pay for a bus driver salary benefits, so.
So what can we as a board do to help that program grow?
I think right now, the state is, they are looking at, as long as you're applying, I, I think they're willing to hand out that money right now for those programs. So we'll just keep asking.
Very good question, Tim, I appreciate that, 'cause it's kinda good to know. And I know staff is on top of this, the duration of these grants, because sometimes that puts you all and the program in a very difficult position, and us as well, as a community, for the standard of funding. So I appreciate the grant, the work, and, and the involvement, it's just pretty exciting.
All right, these are just some pictures of our professional development. We've got, really now, we try to do a lot of team building and smaller group works with having such a very large staff. So this was at the beginning of the year, so we've got our certified and our classified. Here, we're at one of their special education trainings at the beginning of the year. Down here at the bottom, this was getting to Christmas time, so a lot of stress, and, you know. So we did a lot of fun team building there. And again, it was with certified and classified. That last slide came from this last Building and Service Day, designing our play. We did do a lot of professional development this year on purposeful play. And we were able to, preschool teachers and kindergarten teachers worked together on this professional development day. So thank you very much for allowing that to happen. On this next slide, here we were in our different groups. The task was, these are our standards that we were working with. So teachers were making sure whatever the activity was, the materials, what was gonna be needed, what the teacher's role was, what the student's role was, but making sure it all tied to our standards, so. And then we like to have fun, not just with our Garfield family, but our, our families that we go home to. So family barbecue at the beginning of the school year. And then Christmas party we had. So a lot of games, and just getting to know each other that way.
Sarah's gonna talk about our ASQ. So this year, the state required kindergarten and preschool to hand out the ASQ to our students and their, and their families. We handed out both the ASQ III, which is the cognitive, fine motor, gross motor, it's a screener that looks those types of things, and then the ASQ SE, which is the social-emotional part. And we handed those out to about four hundred of our six hundred and eighteen students. So we handed out to all families. It wasn't required for us to get them back this year. I think that's something that will come eventually. Kindergarten already has to kinda hunt them down if they're missing. But it gave us a lot of good information. We used it during our SAT meetings. And then also, teachers looked at that information, just if they had concerns as well. And then we also had a day at the beginning of the year where we conferenced with parents, which I thought went really well. We were kind of nervous about how all of that was going to play out, just with so many parents. And there's a lot of information coming from those, but it, it went really well.
There was a lot of good comments from parents, 'cause normally we don't visit with them until, say, parent-teacher conferences. So this was right at the beginning of the year. They were very appreciative of that data.
So are these given in multiple languages, or?
It is. We have, the online component gives, gives us Spanish and English. We had Albert come on that day and help us out with the Ramiz, translating for that.
Tim, did you have one?
A question. So tell me what ASQ III and ASQ SE, I mean, what kind of questions is it about, how the student's doing?
Mm-hmm, so it's, it's given to the parents, and the parents fill out the entire questionnaire. The ASQ III would maybe ask, does your, can your student or child catch a ball? Can they count to three? Just things, questions like that. And then the social-emotional one, the questions would be more like, when your child is, is told no, do they throw fit? If you, if they don't get what they want, or if they, can they regulate their emotions, basically?
And ASQ stands for Ages and Stages questionnaire.
Okay, so we adopted FastBridge as our assessment this year, along with the rest of the district. And it was kind of interesting. We gave these sub-tests: letter sounds, letter naming, onset sounds, consonant print, numeral identification, matching quantities, and number sequencing. They are the same tests that are given to the kindergarteners at the beginning of the year. They're just, they're just normed down for, for our kiddos. Unfortunately, the FastBridge system, when we uploaded our students, we uploaded everyone, but we only gave it to four-year-olds, and it confused the system. We had to have seventy percent of our students take the test, and we did not reach that mark, because we have so many three-year-olds enrolled. So we have no building data to show you because of that, but we're hoping that next year we can figure that out, and only upload our four-year-olds who will be taking this. The next slide is our PPBT data. This is something that we've been giving as long as I've been an ELF teacher. It is our picture. It measures vocabulary. So it's a flip book with pictures, and we say a word, and the student has to choose the picture that goes along with that word. So in the fall, you can see that we had quite a bit of red, which is below, and now our spring data looks much better. We do give this to all of our students, so all three and four-year-olds. But we always see a lot of growth, which is great.
Can I ask a quick question along those lines? Do you have much turnover, since these are early childhood individuals and families? Is there, is that a moving target? You don't have the same population necessarily taking each of those tests, right?
You are correct, yeah.
I just don't know how much turnover there is, but I presume that would affect that too, the newbies coming in.
One last thing I wanted to say about the assessments, sorry, that's a problem. Was just that this year we did try a testing team as well. And I think that was something that went pretty well, considering the number of students that we have, and, and the fact that we were trying out FastBridge for the first time. So I was very appreciative of our teachers for letting us have their kids whenever we wanted them. And I think that you, you guys appreciated the, the time, because we, we figured it would help with our instruction time. Because it takes a long time to give these assessments to three and four-year-olds. They don't always wanna sit still for them. And teachers were having to do that on their, during instruction time. And so with our testing team, we got to pull them out, and we felt that went well, so.
So you mean like a group of people pulled kids out instead of trying to test them?
Yes.
So you have six hundred kids, and you have three different, I guess the first one you sent, so parents have to do that.
Yes.
Okay, but then the next two, you all have to do.
The FastBridge is, yes, fall, winter, spring. PPBT's just fall and spring.
So you do the PPBT two times, right? That's a lot of testing these little guys.
It is.
And if I could interject something. We looked, as teachers, at the time it was taking us to test, and it was basically nine weeks out of the school year that we were testing and not teaching. And so I was thankful when they developed the testing teams, and trained classified, as well as the certified, to do that, because it didn't take us out of the classroom, basically, for one quarter of the year.
So did you guys come up with that on your own, to do that, or was that an idea that came?
Where did that come from? You last year?
Probably me. Being the instructional coach last year, or the four years before that, it was just, if teachers were in the hallway testing, or in a closet, trying to be in a quiet place, then that left the para with sixteen kids, and it was, it was a little chaotic. The stress levels for teachers and classified, it was a lot higher. So we're like, well, let's try to do this. So instructional coach, or special education teacher, their paras, interventionists are the ones that, that did it, so.
Branding is my last thing. Last year, we put in place a project, basically just to get our name out into the community in a positive manner. And every month, we give out something to our parents, just to say thank you for being part of our family. And some of the things that we've done, coffee, we've got a couple of things for you guys. We have some stickers here for their, their window clings for their car. We have pencils. We've done Papa John's cards. We've had some of our community members donate some things to hand out to parents. But it's just a way of us saying thank you for, for being part of our, our school.
So through our PTO this year, we did our first family dance, which was super precious. There was lots of three, four, and five-year-olds dancing in the middle, and the parents kind of were just around observing their kids dance. But we had a really good turnout, and it was something fun that I think we'll continue on as kind of a tradition for the school.
Well, PTO provides funding for us to be able to have field trips, and the classroom teachers appreciate that. And then we also raise money so that we can get some things for the school that otherwise no one can be available. And we've had really good support from the community. And each, in my classroom and my pod, we try once a month to have some kind of family engagement, where we invite the parents to come into the classroom. And then we do, each semester, do one large one. This is some pictures of our science night, and just some exploratory things that the kids could do. And that was super fun. They had, you could see like a track over there with, they put that together, and they could run little balls down through it, and so to see how it all works. And then the cogs, and then the pumpkins, we exploded those with vinegar and baking soda. The kids think that's just magic. And so it was just a fun, fun night to put that together and to do that. And then the family dance was our second quarter of the second semester family engagement. But each of our classrooms come up with different things, whether it's like at Halloween. I did one at Easter, where I invited the parents to come and participate with the Easter egg hunt. So that was super fun. And Valentines, Grandparent Day, Mother's Day, you know, different things like that.
And what kind of response do you get? Do you, do you really get good parent participation?
I've had really good parent participation.
And Lisa brought her kiddos, yeah.
We don't usually have a hard time getting families to come to. They wanna be involved, you know?
Right, Megan.
All right, we try to get the community involved also. So we talked about community helpers, and so we invited some community helpers to come and show the kids kind of some hands-on stuff, experience for them. The firefighters came, the police officer. I think that's firefighter up there, too. Oh, no, that's the, the farm, yeah.
She had the, what was his, he worked at the John Deere program at the college.
And he brought a tractor for the kids, so that was really neat. And then this is the EMTs, and then from Genesis.
All right.
So I'm Amber Chletta, I'm a classroom teacher, and I am one of the members of our SAT team. This is the first year that we've actually had a SAT team, as opposed to just Miss Annette running the show here. We have a couple other members. Jordan, Nicola, and Sarah.
We, for the SAT team this year, it being our first year, we kind of had, we had to figure out how things were going to run. And we decided that we ended up with eleven students that came to the SAT team, or their teachers brought them to the SAT team. And of those, only four were academic, the rest of them were behavior. So I think that's. Nineteen, nineteen, yes, you're right. And so of, I think that's one of the reasons that we're looking at requesting for a full-time social worker or counselor, is our teachers are having to, to problem-solve a lot of behaviors. And the SAT team is, is helpful, but that would be an extra resource that we could use. And we would definitely be appreciated. But the SAT team, I think, has been very helpful. We, we look at what the teacher is already doing in the classroom, what interventions or accommodations have been put in place. And then we look at what we, what else we can do to add to that, to make the kid more successful.
All right, do you have any more questions for us?
Hey, board, any more questions for, for all of the presenters? I have one. Again, you talked about how we still do that. First off, I don't know how you do it, in one building with all of those kids and all of those families. You're amazing, all of you. I'm just wondering, are we growing as far as students involved there?
Like I said, how we added those four new classrooms this year, and advertised, and, and already for next year.
And does that bring up, well, it certainly brings up logistics, as you talked about it, when you've asked for support. Is there space in the building?
We're running out.
Any questions?
So what's the difference between a KPP, what does, is there, are there, or are there significant differences between a KPP classroom and a regular?
Like an ELF classroom?
Right.
The ELF students are early learning for four-year-olds, so they have to be four-year-old, four-years-old when school starts. And they will go to kindergarten the next year. The Kansas Preschool Pilot KPP classrooms, they could be three or four-year-olds. So we could have them two years in a row. Well, and all of the four-year-old at risk, they have to meet a qualification. They have to be at risk. And the KPP just fifty percent have to be at risk. Fifty percent can be anyone.
Guess the only other question I would have, I'm sorry, I keep throwing them out there. But in this building, you're dealing with three to five?
Actually, pre-teen, to five.
That's what I was, that's what I thought I understood, is it's actually.
Yeah, we have parents as teachers.
All pre-teen kindergarten, to a certain extent, if there's some kind of a program there. We also coordinate with other service providers, like say, Russell Chalko. Transition them over at three or something like that.
I would say that's one of the biggest pieces of parents as teachers, is that as soon as we can, we identify those kids, if they're having any possible delays. And this year, currently, we have referred twenty-two children to Russell Chalko Development Center, and all twenty-two have any education plans, family plans. And that, another key piece is to get these kids, and their parents, and learning, and on the way.
It really takes a village, doesn't it? Not to, it's a cliche, it's just true. Any other questions for these, or Steve?
I would just like to echo your comment, compliments. We really do appreciate all you're doing. So if we do a little math, our kindergarten, kindergarten classes typically run around six hundred. A little, little lower than that the last couple of years, but. So if you push that back to three and four-year-olds, that would mean we have about twelve hundred in the, in the community. That doesn't count our, our parochial schools. So that twelve hundred probably gets closer to twelve fifty. We're thrilled to be serving over six hundred. But, and we know we have a few options for families, and church options for preschools. But you can see there's still a considerable gap. And so I think we are in a time where the state is, has recognized the importance of early childhood education, not only three to five, but also birth to, birth to three. So we are seeing more opportunities, but we are running into the challenge of space. Since 2012, we've been fortunate to have the Early Childhood Center. But we're, if we're not full, we're getting mighty close. And, and if we get these additional classrooms, we will pretty much be there for the future. So I guess that's a good problem to have, but it, it's also important that we recognize that we are gonna have to start looking probably at some other alternatives for space if we're gonna continue to grow, to meet those needs. So, and thanks to these guys, I tell you, if you, if you get a chance next year when school starts, visit the Early Childhood Center in the first week. Then go back about three to four weeks later, that doesn't take very long. Go back about four weeks later, and what you'll see is an amazing transformation, where these groups of kids are, you know, we talked about being on task, and they are so on task in that four-year, or that four-week timeframe, that it's, it's, it really is amazing where they get to from where they start. And that's, that is some incredible work by these people that are working with young kids. I learned early in my career, I was a secondary teacher, the younger the kids are, the harder the teacher has to work to make that all happen. So these are some really hard-working folks, so thank you.
Well, thank you for that, and thank you all, too. You know, institutions don't love, they don't provide that, that people need, particularly at those young, at that young age, it's people that make all the difference, and that's you guys. So thank you very much. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Hey, Mark, I did have one more thing. Thanks for the goodies, but they weren't near as good as your assistant at the liberal. Okay, thank you again.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we're ready for Agenda Item D, which is correspondence. Do you have any? And then we're, then consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion, and a second, and then we'll discuss. Oh, okay, good.
Hello?
Okay, another time we're going to do the consent agenda, so I didn't know if you wanted to...
Sure.
Okay. So, Mr. President, I approve that we approved the consent agenda items as follows. E, one, through by D.
Okay, we've got a motion, do we have a second? Okay, motion and a second, now we're ready for some discussion. I know, Tim, you had indicated to me earlier, you might want to make a comment or two.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Agenda Item five, as I look at that, the document that we were sending, it appeared to me that we had two bidders, one from Cummins Corporation, and then one from 3G Electric. And the prices, we didn't have 3G electric, so I did call Dr. Carlin. If you could just clarify what that was all about.
Sure. So, on five A and B, both those were purchasing through the state contract. And there's two or three pages that itemize from the Cummins Group, what basically we're getting for this project. There was a fourth page that came from 3G, I believe, that kind of looked like a bid, but really what it was, was they're going to do the electrical work kind of as a subcontractor for the Cummins Group. So, it's basically a list of what their part of the project will be. We didn't, this wasn't something that they bid on to the district separately. They're bidding as a subcontractor and will do that work. So, these two generators are being replaced, we're switching to natural gas. And so, these are replacement pieces. And then the, switching to the natural gas because it's a better long-term solution for those two schools.
Then one more, Mr. Chairman, if I may. Agenda Item four A, the iPad cases, as I looked at that bid, it appeared to me that we were buying iPad cases for the next four years. And as I remember our discussion as a board, you know, we were thinking about looking at something different, maybe, in the future. And so, my concern was, why would we buy iPad cases for, to go four more years? So, I did call Dr. Carlin on that, and he could clarify.
Yeah, so on that, on that sheet that describes the bid, there's a, there's an item that talks about how long the service will, or the product will cover. So, I think it says four years on there with the idea that these cases will last for four years. It's not we're buying four years of work cases, it's the cases that we buy should last for four years with those devices.
And I just want a clarification, so that someone go on our website and look at our agenda for tonight, they can assume the same thing. I'm probably the only one that assumed that in the whole Garden City community. I wanted to have the chance to make sure I understood, and if others might have the same question.
Oh, I think very productive question, and certainly, Terry, on their said period of time that the bid will cover is four years. So, thank you for the clarification on that, and a question, Tim. Any other discussion on the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, I guess we'll vote, we will vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion passed. Okay, thank you all for that.